There's just pretty much nobody else to. Yeah, yeah. I don't have a lot of competition. Not making a lot of money. Just somebody. Things that. There's additional management. Finally gets some better sleeves. It's. Yeah, a part of us transition. So. A lot of this relationship. Obviously, we got the auto.
We have.
And so. I feel we think we've always. It's so good. It's hard to wear a shirt every time. Then go. Just. Now. It's. Don't need it. I'm sorry. That's. I don't. Absolutely. So. Our church. So then.
Thanks, Father. It's all my work. Yeah. It's. It is.
I think it's. Some person I had. You have probably. It's been for about thirty years. It's been. Just saying, they're selling you. It's more same. That's right. Yes.
Yeah.
Sure. So she was able to be so slight. She had my. So. She has. They face. We have. That she's. It's going on. She's saying that myself. Not even on stuff. Suppose. I guess there may have been one where we didn't. Such.
Get some help. Yeah.
We can't. If you know. You know. For us. This is software development. So they.
That's safe.
They're gonna. Need to. Be good things also. Back in. Decision. Child. To the side. After which. Suddenly, almost you're doing it again. Sounds. Yeah, I think bragging more. Because there's a lot of details that would connect to us. They said it. They said I'll show you. I've been. So we have. But still. Utilize their service. Good. Been doing it. Oh. Say. Sorry for both of those. Said I'm not on the board. Went off. For the media. And some things like they've hired. And it's like. Yes. Well, so. The West Side. I think it's. They're very low staff. They have a lot. Yeah. I think. Okay. You're right. That. You know. So. See. Is it? It's. Yeah. Especially. We have. It's hasn't bothered to handle. He killed. That's called. Or something up. I don't. I mean, there's a lot.
Higher.
So. Wouldn't. So I'm. Just. She looks. She did.
Have been. About this.
It is. That's. Same. I'm. I just. Was like. Yeah. I was just setting back. I'd say. So. Okay. Go ahead. Yeah. My soul. So process.
You have.
It's. It's. Makes so much money. It's just I work. I get really. Do. Always. So. I think that's. But so. I was. You know. Maybe load on. This is. For services. I'm prepared. What. This is. I don't. As this one says. It's. I mean. To recommend. So. No one. Six thirty. You have six thirty. It's. I guess. Six thirty.
I'm saying you will lead us in application.
Heavenly Father. Up to you today. To ask for your guidance. Thank you for bringing us all here safe and sound. We ask that you will preside through us in this meeting. Allow us to. Think open mindedly. And wholeheartedly. And make decisions for the town to the best of our abilities.
Amen. Your Johnson, I pledge allegiance.
I pledge. To the. Of the United States of America. And to. For which we stand. One nation under God. In this law. With liberty and justice for all.
Which number? We need to know recitation of the. Vision statement. Vision statement.
To advance a framework for our success to balance governance, dynamic partnerships, and engaged community.
Mr. Brown, if you will lead us in our vision statement.
Silo City is a safe, prosperous, and vibrant community. For diversity, innovation, and education drives success in a globally competitive society.
Thank you both. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No, I don't have any.
Make a motion to approve the.
Sir.
I move on the second that we approve the agenda as is. All in favor, let it be known by sound. Something about. All opposed having the same right hearing on motion carries.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Sir.
So the move to probably second that the consent agenda be. Approved as is. All in favor by sound. All opposed at the same right. Hearing none. The consent agenda is approved. Public comments. Do we have anyone signed up? Uh. Yeah, Mr. Pagan.
Yes.
Could we please come forward, state your name and address?
Uh. Logan.
Logan.
Logan, yes.
Excuse me.
It's okay. Thirty nine old four Waters Edge Drive. Raleigh, North Carolina. Am I sorry?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, good evening, commissioners. You may recall, I came here before this body September of twenty twenty three. And I shared with you that we, our organization, Hispanos de Azul, Hispanics of the South. Were the victims of discrimination by Elvin Loy Espinal, where they prevented us from participating in the Hispanic festival. That happens every year in Silo City. We came here, we shared that they prevented us from participating in September of twenty twenty three. Even though in September of twenty twenty two, we actually participated in the actual festival. They told us that we couldn't participate because our values were not aligned. They, within the twelve months from twenty twenty two, September to twenty twenty three, September, they realized that we were. In, we were not aligned with their value, what they told us in writing. I sent the email out to the commissioners. I called some of you and I spoke to some of you about this. My understanding is that nothing has happened since then regarding that issue that we were discriminated against by this organization, Elvin Loy Espinal. And I'm asking that the commissioners. Put into the application or permitting process. To use public land for a, an activity, a public activity, a non discrimination clause. That prohibits anyone who's doing anything on city or public land. And they give me a permit by this body, the city. That a, that no discrimination be allowed. That free speech in the First Amendment will be respected. And we're asking that that be placed into the application process for any license, any permit that's given to do. These kind of events on public land. I understand that. The, that the body has not had discussions around this issue. When I came last year. And I'd like the body to consider that. And that exactly change that process. So that anybody, whether they, whether it's. The Elvin Loy Espinal, another organization, whoever comes into your, your, your town to do an event. That they have to comply with non discrimination practices. And if they are proven to. To not block, that there should be some fines levied and they be prevented. From participating and getting some kind of permit or approval in the future. I'd like for you guys to look at that and consider putting that into your application process so that no one else will be discriminated against. Mind you, we're Hispanic organization. Discriminated by another Hispanic organization during Hispanic Heritage Month. I'd like for you to consider that today, if at all possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We need. Those other session.
Most of the closed public comment.
So then. That move to second to close comment section. All in favor by sound. All opposed having the same right hearing on motion carries. No business. Five point one ticket. I ticket law.
There are. By the way, she said. Chief. Excuse me, Matt. Should provide this presentation and information. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr.
Oh. Couple of weeks ago, I had Sergeant Chad Oaks approach me and. Said that Dan Hatley, we have back here, Dan and Tom. Dan is a founding attorney of iTicket. And Tom is the CEO of iTicket dot com. And. Wanted me to set up a conversation with Dan. So we had that conversation and basically. They currently do this. I won't give a contract or have an agreement with Orange County Sheriff's Office where. The Orange County Sheriff's Office has an employee that runs their driver's license checks. And they average between thirty five hundred to four thousand requests a month. Now, they compensate. Orange County back for each one of these. At about five dollar per record check. So. Yeah, I don't want to speak for them, but there's some issues with that process. Going on in Orange County. So Dan and I had a conversation and then last week we brought. The town manager and the mayor came to it. We had John, the finance director at the meeting. So we sat down and, and listened to the presentation. So basically, I guess what we're bringing before y'all is there's an opportunity for us at the police department to take this on. It would require us to hire a full time records clerk. And then, you know, we would average, this person would be running thirty five hundred to four thousand. This is legal. We have all the capabilities through DCI. Andrea, who's currently our tack with DCI has already checked. We're set up for this, this process. And we would have power records clerk do this. It's basically. In my best calculations, it takes about five hours a day. To accomplish all this. And then we're working on some processes as far as how we will get those record checks to them. There's a lot of options on the table there. Right now, but we think we can make a smooth transition with that. What I was kind of brought to Jack is if, if we can hire this full time records clerk. Hopefully, we can hire somebody for second shift. And my thought is, I think we would be able to leave the police department open later. They would be able to be at the front of the police department, which we could keep open later. So that's been an issue that's been brought before. So I think this is a solution to that also. And that person, we could adjust the hour relatively more and open until eleven or twelve. Monday through Friday. Part of this process. And what I brought to Jack earlier today was an Andrea who's here. We would change her position title to senior administrative support specialist. So she would need to supervise this record clerk because she is our tack with DCI. Also, when this person is off. Andrew would have to also keep up those requests. So I'm also kind of proposed to Jack that we increase salary with her because she's going to be taking a lot of extra job responsibility with this. Especially when that person is off because we have to continue this flow. With this agreement we would have with iTicket dot law. We're estimating on the low end with thirty five hundred requests and five dollars a request. You know, this will bring in two hundred and ten thousand dollars. In revenue that we could use at the police department. We have some big ticket items coming. I've talked with Jack. And I know with the mayor, all I want cameras and in car cameras have to be replaced next year. I got a quote recently, that's two hundred and forty seven thousand dollars. That is going to cost us to replace all that. You all know, a police department cannot function this day and time without having buying cameras and in car cameras. So that's a big ticket. We do have some other ones that will be coming. I think this is a revenue that we can have coming in that will help with those costs and not have to pull from somewhere else. To meet those requests. Related to it. Again, Dan, Tom's here. If you have any questions, they have been wonderful to work with. They have had some other agencies that are interested. In this opportunity. We try to sell it to them that we'll give them the best customer service relates to this. If, if y'all soon decide we can move forward with this process.
What? Can you go to the radios also that has to be replaced that's coming up? And that's roughly what?
We're looking at when the merger was made with Chatham nine one one, which was twenty twenty three. I had a talk with Mike, who's the director with them. And our radios are basically have a shelf life of ten years. So we're looking at twenty thirty three having to replace. And this includes the fire department and the police department. And the best rough estimate I could give is six hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars. But it's going to cost to make that. So as, you know, as we move forward with this, if we get some of our big ticket items, I think we can take this money and, and put it in a fund and start saving. For that, so that the city doesn't have this. Big cost laid on at one time. So there's a lot of benefit to the police department, the public safety side with this partnership.
Well, I'm all for it, chief. I mean. Instead of in car cameras, there's a quarter million and the radio replacement is six to seven hundred thousand.
That's the best I can. At, at this time, we're talking. But that's, we'd have to really start looking at the radios. That's handheld and in vehicle radios. And that's again, that would be the fire department and the police department. We're looking at right around between six hundred to seven hundred thousand to make that transition if we have to make.
By next year. So by next year.
Now, the radios, we're looking at, we probably have to start somewhere around twenty thirty, twenty thirty. By twenty thirty three, we would have to make that full switch out. So that's on the radios. I mean, the current cameras that we have are out of date. We can't get any replacements for them right now. If they go down or the battery quits working, we're just. We're out, we're out of luck with.
Yeah. And. I'm not. Feel the proposal. No, but in the middle, we used to. Request them from the sheriff's department, the police department, and that kind of. Fell off at some point. I'd love to see it back. So I'd be all for it.
What are Andrea's thoughts?
Well, that's a good thing she said.
I didn't like it when the old supervisor got away with doing it for the local attorneys in town. I, I didn't agree with it, but that wasn't my decision. I'm all for it because it's going to bring revenue into us and, you know, there's items these guys are going to have.
Yeah, we've had some very open conversations about this. And that's one thing when I got to looking at her position title and then this added responsibility. I do think we need to. Change her position title and, and then increase her salary some because. She will supervise this process, supervise the person. And then also when that person's out of pocket, whether they're on vacation or whatever, then she's going to have to step up and, and fulfill these requests.
So procedure will just make sense to me. I think it's a real man. So.
And John, that would we put in our set aside one, especially.
We do this in a couple of different ways. But yeah, it can be. It don't have to online. We track ten years down the road as we have it in the last ten years.
So it's asked for seven to go, right?
I'm sorry.
What the hell for seven to go.
The hours that we would have this person work.
Right.
It would depend on how late that we're looking at wanting to keep the police department up. And we'll go into eleven or to midnight. We would bring this person in second shift. To, to, and as staff at the front, they can, they can still do this job while, you know, dealing with any public that comes through. So.
Well, that could all be out now, but. You know. I remember having a big commercial. We're in the team standard. Financial agreement. Back to. Now, we're the vehicle request partnership.
So. So the move to probably second that iTicket law in the town. I hear in joint agreement, all in favor by, by sign of I. All opposed having the same right. Hearing none, motion carried. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Five point two. An annexation request from Hampton Village LLC.
So we received. A voluntary annexation petition application from Hampton Village. At the, at April twenty sixth of twenty four. And we're just now bringing that before you guys because. We ran in, I wanted to do some additional research because Hampton Village LLC actually petitioned the board of commissioners for the same petition back in twenty thirteen. Isn't that right, William?
This was around the time.
And the commissioners at the time, the board did not on that. So we wanted to make sure if that was what they called dead in the water and it was. So I know I've spoken with Kent Suits and he is very aware that we did some research on that. So he did have to, we did have to move forward with this petition. And so Chris, if you want to help me, let the commissioner know. Where exactly, you know, who Fairfax Street is. And how this kind of ties in to some of our other local home parks kind of in the area. So.
Yeah, so it's off of. On a road church in the very back. Visa Hampton, Hampton Village's property. Back when we asked y'all a couple of weeks ago for the.
Yes.
San Diego Church.
Good. In Florida.
We took a long day.
Yeah.
Is that. Oh, that's on the other side of all of this, right?
On opposite side of all of this.
Where they used to have one of the. Maybe the things for the national. Yeah.
So they are also one of the easements. One of the requests that we're going through for easements in the combination. So this was part of the request, although it can't be, you know, it was part of the request, but we can't look at it that way. So what I'm asking tonight is for you to approve the attached resolution to read the town clerk. To review the subject petition and offer findings of sufficiency. Yes, sir.
Do we have any information on what happened in twenty thirteen?
Yes, we do. And I can provide that to you. And the findings. It's the board did not act on it and they have that choice. There. I really don't know why. As much as I could find, they just chose not to act on it. And that is in annexation processes, the board can choose not to act. And William, you may know a little more about that than I do.
I remember it made it through this first. Resolution to get the then clerk to.
To research.
Research the sufficiency of it. Remember there being some, some issues back then, but I can't remember on that while they were.
I think it would be the first. If I recall correctly, send credit along, but he made it past the first one, but then it didn't make it past the second one.
The board, that's what happened. The board didn't vote. There was no motion. To set up public hearing. So.
Right for lack of motion.
Yes. And so with this one, it'll be a little bit different than the last annexation when we brought the offers, the findings back to you. With this one, it is residential. And so there's a lot of different moving parts to it. So if you do approve the resolution tonight, when I do begin my research, there will be a plethora of different information. Based on taxes, what the trash, water, sewer, like I said, a lot of different moving parts that people have to consider. So it will not be as short as the last one that you just approved.
I think the biggest resource will be from the police department.
I think that, I think that will be.
So maybe the Chatham County Sheriff Office would be valuable to reach out to.
Brian, do you have? Do we know how many people currently live in? How many? I'm not even, like I said, I have not, I'm not even certain, but it will be an impact to our fire and our police department. As well as our. Public Works and Utilities Department. Because we will have to provide them trash pickup and it's, it's a big. It's a, a lot of information I'll have to bring back to y'all.
It's a, it's a trailer park, correct?
Hmm.
Maybe regarding trash, you could get them like a large bin. Be a lot, a lot less of a burden on. Trash pickup. I'm not sure if individual vans or.
Yeah, so they're individually owned and so you have to provide them separate. So. It's like HLA.
See. They currently, they currently have their own trash.
They probably use the county recycle centers, I'm assuming, and that I'm not a hundred percent certain on that, but. Yeah, like I said, there's a lot of moving parts and it'll take Chris and I, as well as the two chiefs to help me kind of do my research and come back to y'all on this.
Make a motion to approve resolution directly to town clerk to review the subject petition and offer findings of sufficiency.
Then. I would probably second that the resolution be moved forward all in favor. Who didn't be not my sign of I. Who's having the same right hearing none. Mostly carried. Manager's report.
Mayor, I got a few things. Things on where it's. In town hall and town government. But a few updates. We've got a commissioner district three community format. Prentarian church this week, Thursday, June sixth at six P M.
Um, six P M.
Prentarian church, South City Prentarian.
I hear you.
Special call meeting for budget public hearing is Tuesday, June eleventh, five thirty. Our next regular meeting is Monday, June seventeenth at six thirty. Two weeks from now. And then the last thing I want to mention is the James Larry Cheek Pavilion Event, Saturday, June twenty second at ten thirty A M. Said Bowling Park.
Give me that one more time, Jack.
Mr. Chiefs event. Saturday, June twenty second at ten thirty.
Ten thirty.
So come out, we have the sixth Thursday. And we have the special call seventeen is our number meeting. And the twenty second. Is the presentation.
Yes, sir.
So we, so we were able to determine that the extra meeting that we had everyone mark on their calendars will not be needed. We hit our dates correctly with our public hearing and our publication dates in the newspaper. So when we have our special call, June eleventh meeting for our first budget hearing, we will have the opportunity to the commissioners approve the budget that night. Or if there's any public testimony, then we can move and try to approve the budget, the budget, June seventeenth. And then one last thing about the Larry Cheek Memorial Event, I did get the invitations in today. And I'll send you all out a text if. How many you want, if you can email me a list of who you want us to send these to. Or I can have the town staff go ahead and stamp these and drop them off to y'all and y'all can fill them out and send them to whoever. But I got ninety invitations. For y'all to mail or me to mail on your behalf.
I just want to make sure that. I'm not sure you covered this, that the commissioners that served with Larry previously. Give a personal invitation.
Of course, his family will take.
Yeah, which was, she is working on that. So I'll get on there.
All right. Down on turn.
I don't have anything at this time.
Okay, government body comments.
Yes, sir. If I can make a comment related to Mr. Pagan's comments regarding the famous speech issue in Silo City. I look and we read these, these things every day and we have a meeting, the recitation of the mission statement. As well as the vision statement.
as well as the vision statement, both of which foundationally need freedom of speech uninhibited at all of our town events. Engage community requires that people can disseminate knowledge freely. Diversity, innovation, education rely on freedom of speech where ideas can prosper. People can engage with each other who have conflicting ideologies and whatnot. And I, I did also learn too that the the Catholic Church of Siler City was not allowed to attend the event. And I find that very disheartening considering sixty percent of our population is Hispanic. And that is their largest religious affiliation is with the Catholic Church. They were not allowed to attend that event based on that, but they were allowed to donate. They could not have a booth, Esko could not have a booth. I think we should strongly consider adopting a non discriminatory clause that doesn't allow people to discriminate based on political ideology, religious affiliation or whatnot, so long as they do not act in violence. Of course, that's, that's where you draw the line with freedom of speech. You cannot be violent. But people should always be able to spread their ideas. And this, I take this also very seriously because the district four that I represent has a lot of the central part of our town downtown area where these festivals are held. And I don't take it lightly that this is where ideas are created. We foster great things at our events and I want to make sure that people can do it as, as free as possible. I hope my coworkers share this sentiment as well. I don't know if they have any comments regarding what we will discuss, but I, I'd like to hear what you all, if you have any comments about that. You sympathize or?
Alan, are you at liberty to say what event?
It was the Hispanic, the Hispanic Festival last September.
So the, the Catholic Church was not allowed also?
Yes, ma'am. The Catholic Church was not allowed to attend. No churches were allowed to attend. And Southern City is not a secular city. Southern City is a very religious city. If you saw the chicken festival here last month, there were a lot of church booths there and I want to make sure that we still foster that in our community. That's a really good way for people to connect with each other. It's extremely important that we hold on to that. But yes, it was the Catholic Church Commissioner. Any other comments regarding that?
Governor from Lindsey Ray. Executive Governmental Relations Manager and the two hundred and fiftyth anniversary is coming up of the United States in twenty twenty five. United States will be two hundred and fifty years old. And they are asking for a representative from our area to help with that commemoration and I have volunteered to do that for the town of Siler City. It will start very quickly. They are not they want Siler City in it and they specifically call for us to join into this. So guys, as we get more information, we will basically share it with you. And hopefully we'll have a grand celebration for two hundred and fifty years. I was fortunate enough to graduate in nineteen seventy six. And so that was the Centennial anniversary along with Commissioner Ray. So we are special class two.
I see still in how old we are.
Water meters, they get a report on water meters or water meters are being put in and processed. Guys, you have to know any new technology is going to some bugs, some glitches. It's it's just what it is. And I, I went and checked the lady's house today when I left the office and I have to give a public words because her meter, the new one is, I don't know what it's doing. But it reads, it goes up and down and up and down and up and down. And so I'm not sure what's going on there, but we'll get with the proper people. So we're going to have that until these bugs are armed out, but just bear with us. And there's a lot of good stuff going on behind the scenes that you may not be aware of. But trust me, this group is working together and working for the common good of the town of Siler City. I see a lot of good things happening. We walk the streets in the morning, especially Monday morning to see what it looks like over the weekend and I was so, I was throwing all the trash and empty, but it was no trash downtown. We still got some things we need to to work on and our neighborhoods hopefully are coming together. We do have some issues. Our code enforcement officer is riding, ticketing, talking to people, trying to get them up to par. If we can ever get a handle on this flooding, I think we'll be in a real good place, but that too is coming. So I, I think you guys should be really proud of the progress that has been made. Because a lot of good things are happening. A lot of good people are working hard to make this the best place in the United States to live. I'm not, I'm skipping Chad account in the United States. And so again, if there's nothing else.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, the vision statement, I just want to go back to what I was saying. The vision and the mission statement are mere words. So I'd like to propose a motion that we do this and move forward with, with an actual action to uphold what is most consequential human right, a natural right. I make a motion that the town board adopt a non discriminatory clause to all applicants to any festival that is held on public land. This is very important. It should not be anything based on political ideology, religion, color of your skin, what have you. Everybody should be allowed to discuss freely. So I make a motion to adopt the non discriminatory clause for town festivals.
I can make it as quickly as possible, but you, you just, you just can't because you have to have our attorney research it first. That's probably when we're speaking up because we're on the that the law of non discrimination clause put into our authentication, our attorney has to vet it, research it, come up with a proposal, send it to us.
That's fair.
So you can't just say, I'm you have to research it first and then come back. And I fully expect that that'll be done.
William, can you provide something like that for us?
I've already asked Jack, made him list things to send me.
So I think.
We can discuss this at the next.
I think your motion is premature before we get a report back. But I mean, I would generally think I could go ahead and implement to ask you to do it.
And you know, plus it's dangerous when you have one side. I don't know, Mr. Big on. And I don't know the circumstances and I don't think the board does either. And so it would be totally unfair for us to do anything like that until we heard from both parties and we haven't.
If she'd like to come and discuss, that's fine. But there's, I don't think there's anything non, there's nothing controversial about a non discriminatory clause being added. So if there's a you know, worry about it being legal or whatnot, like we have some legal hoops to jump through, I respect that, but it's, this is a this is a non discriminatory clause. It applies to absolutely everybody. So here going forward, it would just ensure that anybody could have a booth at one of these festivals, whether it be the Hispanic Festival, the Chicken Festival, whatnot. We want diversity in our town. We want people's ideas to speak freely.
So just, just out of curiosity.
Mayor, so the, this has come up before.
Yeah.
And the Hispanic liaison festival is not a town sponsored event. This is a street closure request that she comes and she provides and you guys close it. Just like the, how it differs and William, correct me if I'm wrong, this is why I believe this is why a lot of research needs to be done. Because the town of Siler City's Chicken Festival is a town sponsored event. The Hispanic liaison event as well as other festivals like Chatham Jug Free and some of the others. They are, they are doing this on their own as a separate entity. They're using, if we want to get technical, the state of North Carolina's roads, the D O T's roads. That's not the town's property. But it is public. However, I think it goes a little deeper with our research that we need to bring a lot of different scenarios in. Because if someone's running for Raxton for a birthday party, that's their private birthday party and they have the right to not invite a kid if they don't like the kid in their classroom. And so that's how, you know, I feel like that's why we have to be extremely careful and fair and non biased and do a lot of research, whether it's a private event or if it's a town sponsored event.
So with the attorneys, attorneys for D O T as well. And that's, uh, nobody owns, likes discrimination. We would never stand up for discrimination. But we have to, you know, do our research and see what we can do on a private event. That's on a D O T street.
I hope you take that very seriously because discrimination did take place on multiple regards. So I just, I, I hope it doesn't happen again to these groups.
All right.
Brother.
Yes. Um, I had a concern expressed to me by a resident last week. And I just kind of wanted to make a known to the board about, I don't know if it's appropriate to ask for code enforcement to maybe take a look at a possible dirt bike track in front of a home in residential area in Parkwood. Parkwood neighborhood, Homewood Acres on Parkwood.
Parkwood.
A lot of traffic. It seems like could be a potential boarding house or something of the sort. I don't want to make allegations, but if it's appropriate, I would like to ask for that to be followed up on.
Okay, is that something?
Riding on private property is nothing we can do about it. They have to come out on top of the road.
It could be an issue, but it could be a criminal issue.
It's been a bit of an odd issue. And do we permit dirt bike tracks in yards in a residential area?
Is it dirt bike?
Maybe even more zoning important than anything.
Thank you. Is that a bicycle or?
Hey Brian, I stop by because I'm delivering, when I deliver traffic. Yeah.
They're on that loud.
We're actually going to close session soon.
It's been probably, now it's been probably moved this second in that we enter into closed session, all in favor by side by. All days have the same right here. Thank you guys for coming out and everyone, and I hope we get something out of what we're calling on. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Ms. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
How about your prefer gun?